All right, call tonight's meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with the approval of the Seabig's agenda.
Well, we have to get there.
I move the Board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Denise, when you're ready.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
It's Drew.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And to approval of our April 4th study session minutes.
I move the Board to approve the April 4, 2023 study session minutes.
Second. Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Epstein.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then we have some certification of election results, starting with the bond issue question.
I move the Board to approve the April 4, 2023 certified election results for bond issue question, which includes 6,470 yes votes and 1,660 no votes.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And certifying the levy transfer question election results.
I move the Board to approve the April 4, 2023 certified election results for the levy transfer question, which includes 5,284 yes votes and 2,783 no votes.
Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And certifying the election results of board candidates.
I move the Board to declare the election to be in order and that Angela Reed, AJ Byrd, and Jim Dowler were duly elected to serve as Directors for the Liberty School District for a three-year term.
Second. And Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Honoring Excellence, Dallas, how about it?
Good to see everyone. We are gonna be somewhat brief here this evening, but definitely noteworthy as we wanted to reserve this month to recognize a woman that has dedicated 12 years to the Liberty Public Schools Board of Education. I think we've been together for the whole time, in my position, your position, started over on Conister, and these are always bittersweet nights. And we had a chance, I don't know, about a month ago, to visit with Ms. Graham here in this room. And she did some reflecting on her time, so I'm going to turn it over to this video and then I'll turn it back to the Board.
I'm originally from California and was drafted regular to college. And I've done Liberty since, uh, 1955, I think. That may have something to do with me. Got married and been here ever since. Two kids, both in East Palm Alley. We love Liberty. We love just, love this community. So my first dad was born was around the time that there were a lot of financial difficulties happening in the district. And that was really kind of my first exposure to challenges that were happening at the time. And then I moved to help my father for a while and was kind of feeling like it was time to get back into doing something more than just being at home. Based on my past experience with education. I think one other thing that I'm proud of is that the Board has stayed strong. That isn't just one person. That's a group of people deciding that that's how their minds should relate. There are lots of other things. Opening of the community was amazing. Opening both of the stadiums, high schools was huge. The Fine Arts Center, every high school, and all of those things were only because the community wanted to see them happen as well. It wasn't as ordered, but that it could be part of the opposing plans that we wanted to see unfold. So I think I've been ordered for, there are a lot of different things that they're doing. The ability to ask questions, to listen, to have assumptions challenged. I can't say how many times I thought, oh yeah, I think it was all over here. And then when I asked questions, I found out that there's a whole lot more that I need to consider. And one of the things about Jacob's old man, though, and trust will verify. And not just assuming that what someone tells you is the actual story, but asking more questions, getting more perspective, discerning the best way forward. I will, I will miss people. I'll miss being able to see kids in a variety of roles and a variety of experiences all the time. I'll miss seeing teachers who are pouring the kids all the time. I have one going off to college, and so I hope one, one that has three more years to go to high school. I hope that they're for as much as God for the kids. I hope that people remember that I ask questions and I listen. And I make the best decisions I could with the information that I have. And always in the best interest, what I have in the best interest of kids and our community.
Well, I'll open it up to other Board members. If they'd like to say a few words before we give you, I don't know, should we give you the moment first and then you can?
You can go. I need to tell it to myself.
We'll go first.
What happened to our Kleenex box?
Kim Marie, it truly has been a pleasure, a true pleasure and an honor to serve with you. We did some kind of survey or some kind of review of where we landed on issues. You and I were very comparable. I can't recall the document, but it expressed.
Strengths finder.
Is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm.
And I concur with a great deal of that. And it's been a lot to me. There's some of the things like me, you know, I know I think differently. And I like that about me, but I also like it about you. And I've had the opportunity to be engaged with your daughter, especially one of your daughters, working with us on some projects at Garrison Center. And I'm just confident she's gonna be a great asset to this world somewhere, wherever she might be. And just, and of course, you know, I know Kevin, man, and he's a pleasure to work with. So I'm gonna miss you on the Board. So come back once in a while. You see Scott's here. Thank you.
Kim Marie, I'll just, I'll, you know, you were a friend before I was on the Board and, you know, it's just one of those things. I'm so thankful that you decided to pour yourself into this community. And you and Kevin do that all the time, and I know that will continue. But it's work, and you put a lot of work into it. And I know, seeing you as a Board member and working with you as a Board member, I can speak for me, it's made me a better, more reflective person in how I listen and think. I can't think of anybody, I mean, I think everybody on this Board does a good job saying what's in the best interest of kids, but I know you do, and I know you believe it. And I'm just super thankful for you, and I can't tell you how much I'm gonna miss you, but it's one of those things, I just really appreciate all you've done. And it's a well-deserved time off, you know, twice a month, so, at the very least. So, thank you, thank you.
Mark, can I'm short? I know we only overlapped for a year, but you are one of the reasons I looked at looking at running in the first place, because of the service of people like you in this community. It truly, it truly makes me proud to be a part of it, and I'm just so grateful for your example and for your guidance and your encouragement. And I'm gonna miss you, but I also know that this is not.
One of your first questions whenever we are talking about individuals is, how are they doing? And I just, that just, the weight of that for me, and thinking about that, boy. That reminds you that there are people behind every single decision. Yes, we all know that and we recognize that, but you always brought that to the forefront. And I take that not only here, but wherever I go, that there are always people behind whatever decision we make, whether it's here in life, et cetera. There's people that are impacted by that, and we've gotta make sure that we take that into consideration. I always appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for your mentorship, for your traveling skills, your ability to find some of the best restaurants wherever we go. And teaching me that asking questions is of utmost importance, whether it is a comfortable place to be or not. So, thank you.
Okay, well, okay. I, um, so I wrote out my notes because when I remembered my conversation with Dallas, I thought that I had forgotten a whole bunch of things. But reading, looking at the video, I actually said all the things. Most of the things that I thought I wanted to say. So for those of you who know me, this could get me beat, but I'll try to get through it and skip.
You have Kleenex.
You're right, and I have a whole bunch. I'll skip the things that weren't too repetitive. But when I started this work, I had no idea that 12 years later I would be here. I thought, I'll do one term, and it was actually Carolyn Walker, for any of those, any of you who remember him, who said, you're gonna do this work, and you're gonna love it, and you're gonna do it for a long time. And I said, you're wrong, man. He was right. But I am so grateful that I have had the opportunity to serve with amazing people who share my beliefs and have chosen to serve our community. I have always considered the good of the community and the families and our students. Thank you to all of you that I've been able to serve with. And to all of the incredibly bright, talented, and dedicated people who've stepped up in the past and continue to do so in the future. This Board has been very intentional in how we work together with the administration over time, at least for the last 10 years. And our community made it pretty clear by returning Angie and HA and approving the two levies that they approved of the work that this Board and this administration are doing. And what we've accomplished over time, especially around financial planning, in managing growth, and creating opportunities for innovation, has been pretty remarkable. And there are far too many wins to list, and just the three that I did, there are many, many, many more. So my challenge to the incoming Board and future iterations, for whoever is listening, is to continue to work together with that same intentionality and strategic focus, because it is tied directly to academic achievement and district success. All right, so I'd like to thank Dr., Dr., Dr. So I'd like to thank Dr. Tucker and Dr. Youngman before him and all of the district administration team for always making time for me and returning my phone calls. Thank you to principals and teachers who invited me to events and let me stop by unexpectedly to see work in an agent conversation. It was good for my decision-making and being reminded of how much kids are loved in this district was always good for my heart. And I apologize for when it took up extra time at parent-teacher conferences. So again, to this board and future iterations, keep listening, especially to kids, it's vital to making good decisions. Okay, this is the hard one. Thank you to my family for their patience with many missed dinners, many early morning meetings, times not as preoccupied or when I needed to maintain confidentiality. My children have always been the first lens that I used to consider issues and make decisions and I thank them for being open and honest with their thoughts and still hugging me when they saw me at school, even when they got to high school. And I'm grateful to my husband for his wise counsel over the years and his regular reminders of what was important, especially when it was hard. Okay. Lastly, thank you to the community for sharing your thoughts and opinions, you always did, and for those much-needed notes of support, much-needed. Even when I made decisions that some of you disagreed with, I know that I made decisions that were informed and considered all kids. Thank you for trusting me to do this work. It has been the honor of a lifetime.
We have one other item. You probably know what this is.
I do.
We will do that to you. We will make you ring it.
But can I?
If you like.
See, I know what this is.
All right.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
All right. There's a base in there, don't forget.
What's that?
There's a base in there.
Oh, that's right, the base, I know, okay.
Don't throw it away.
You can be excused.
All right, I'm excused. Thank you.
We're done with you. I know it.
You get to go have your thing.
Yes, we will. He's going to find the best taco joints. So go. But you can't leave the room yet.
You can do what you want, I guess. You can do what you want. All right, we have an empty seat, Ms. Bauer. And we have to fill, refill two seats, so.
Refill.
Mr. Byrd. Denise will administer our oath of office to all of our candidates who have been elected, reelected.
Are you ready?
Oh, we'll probably do it. I don't know what up in here, Dallas, where do you?
Usually.
Right up in here.
It's a bit.
It's a better picture.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of school director.
The duties of school director.
In and for the Liberty 53 School District.
In and for the Liberty 53 School District.
County of Clay, State of Missouri.
County of Clay, State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability according to law.
To the best of my ability according to law.
Do you want these signed now, Denise?
All right, Jen, you got to come up here. Okay. Okay. Take this. Okay, I'll hand it over to Dr. Tucker to the executive.
A couple of additional reorganization items. The first order of business as listed is 3.3. On the agenda is election of president of the Board of Education. So at this point, the floor is now open for nominations for the position of Liberty Public Schools Board of Education Presidents.
I would nominate current vice president, Ms. Angie Reed.
Angie Reed has been nominated for president. Are there any additional nominations this evening?
Assuming you would accept.
I would. I would have said no and I not wanted to.
Are you ready for a second?
Well, just one second. Having received no additional nominations, then nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to elect Angie Reed as president by acclamation? Do you have a motion?
The board elect Angie Reed as president of the Board of Education.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Nick Bartlow, seconded by A.J. Byrd. Ms. Denise, would you please call the board?
A.J.?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Angie?
abstain.
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim Marie? Sorry.
I ran down the hall.
You can only do that once.
She's long gone for dinner. And Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So then now we'll open the floor for nominations for the position of Liberty Public Schools Board of Education Vice President. Do we have any nominations?
I would nominate Karen Rogers.
Okay. Karen Rogers has been nominated for the position of vice president. Do we have any additional nominations? So hearing done, having received no additional nominations, nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to elect Karen Rogers as vice president by acclamation?
I move the board elect Karen Rogers as vice president of the Board of Education.
Second. Motion made by Drew Marriott, seconded by Mr. Dean Currents. Denise, would you please call the board?
A.J.?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Abstain.
Jen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will now turn the meeting over to Madam President, Ms. Angie Reed. Thank you, Mr. Bartlow.
Cheers.
So we have before us the board appointment of the MSBA delegate and the alternate. Currently, I am the delegate and A.J. is the alternate.
I'm willing to serve.
So what do, what would you like to do, Mr. Byrd?
I'm willing to serve as the delegate.
Okay, perfect. And since that is a, do we vote on both at the same time?
Similar as we did with, as we did with.
Because they're in the same motion.
The position of president and vice president.
Oh, thanks.
If there are no additional nominations, then it would be a motion to accept Mr. Byrd as an SBA delegate by acclamation.
So any other nominations? Having received no additional nominations, the nominations are ceased. I'm not following this.
Do we need to alternate also in the motion?
Yeah, alternate's in the motion, so let's find out if there's someone who would like to be the alternate.
I'm willing to be the alternate.
You will alternate?
I will alternate.
So is anybody else interested in being the alternate?
There's only one, right?
Correct.
No option is alternate.
Yeah. All right. So having received no additional nominations, nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to appoint A.J. Byrd as MSBA delegate and Drew Marriott as MSBA alternate by acclamation?
I would appoint A.J. Byrd as the MSBA delegate and Drew Marriott as the alternate.
Second. Whenever you're ready.
A.J.?
Abstain.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Abstain.
Karen?
Yes.
Kim? Jen?
Yes.
Motion, or Nick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're good. And then appointment of the treasurer of the Board of Education.
And I hope Ms. Sullivan.
There is no other option.
I move the board appoint Cindy Sullivan as treasurer of the Board of Education.
Second.
Nor anytime to back her.
Are you going to ask her?
Having received no additional nominations, nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to appoint Cindy Sullivan as treasurer by acclamation?
I move the board appoint Cindy Sullivan as treasurer of the Board of Education by acclamation.
Second.
Second.
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So now we move down to appointment of the board secretary. That would be Denise Aldrich has been nominated for board secretary. Are there any other nominations? No one's willing. So having received no additional nominations, nominations are ceased. Is there a motion to appoint Denise Aldrich as board secretary by acclamation?
I move the board appoint Denise Aldrich as Board of Education Secretary.
Second.
Denise?
A.J.?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do you want to switch since you must be there?
I'm fine here. I, it's a lot to move on my job.
I definitely don't want this.
Great. All right. So we come to the section of the meeting for public comment. Just some information, speakers may address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and/or education. Board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those speaking other than to seek clarification of their comments. Speakers will address the board from the podium, are asked to keep remarks concise and to the point, and will not repeat what someone before has said. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. If several patrons wish to speak on the same topic, the board president may restrict the input to one or two spokespersons. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Profane language or comments that constitute a threat to the safety of others is prohibited. Spontaneous comments from the audience will not be tolerated and may close public comment. In the event board members agree to the normal flow of business as being unnecessarily delayed, they may by majority vote, waive, or end public comment. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members usually within the week. And I don't have any cards. Does anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience who has a card that they didn't know where to put or give it to? Then we will move on to the consent agenda. Just for your information, our adopted rules of parliamentary procedures, Robert's rules provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board via a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any one board member.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.5.
Second.
Denise?
A.J.?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Get everybody.
Nailed it.
Nice. I'm sorry, I'm still kind of trying to figure out where this ends. Okay, and now we're on to reports from administration.
Yeah, thank you. The first item then is 6.1, our Innovation and Learning Report, and we will welcome Dr. Jewel Moore to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, as we are at our Board of Education meeting, the Seal of Biliteracy Recognition Ceremony is taking place. I wanted to highlight that we have 84 students being recognized this evening. Seventy-two of them received the Global Seal. Fourteen received the Distinguished Missouri Seal Award. This year, they did something a little different and they allowed international exchange students to participate in the program. And so we had several additional languages. You'll see a lot of French and Spanish and German. We had Swahili, Polish, Danish, Arabic, Russian, Ibu. I had to look up how to pronounce some of these. And then there was one that I'm not sure, Dari or Dari, which is from an area in Afghanistan. So very proud that we have all of those students who were able to achieve the Seal of Biliteracy. We are busy into prep for next year and I wanted to highlight just some of our programs that are focused on real-world learning. Network 53 continues to grow. We have 255 requests for internships next year, which is the highest obviously it's ever been. Early College is at 64 students and we have three students who will be getting their associate's degree either in May or August. One of those students will be graduating with an associate's degree with high honors from MCC. So we're really proud that we continue to see students who participate in Early College for two years earn that associate's degree and go on to four-year university, really set with most of their requirements done. Also, we had our CNA meeting for next year with parents and students at William Jewel. Students received their white lab coats and 100% of the students enrolled in the program now registered for the dual credit. If you remember at our board study session, we shared that William Jewel received a grant and is paying for all of those students to receive the dual credit. So all of them are taking advantage of that. Just a highlight on kindergarten numbers, we are up to 395 now and we have 209 students enrolled at the E C C. So we're starting to see a little bit of an incline there. And then finally, Synergy Services will be honoring Liberty Public Schools. This year's event will honor our Rita Blitt Kindest School Award winner, LPS. The students, parents, teachers, administrators, and counselors at Liberty Public Schools incorporate kindness into every aspect of their school culture and share this kindness with the community in every moment. Synergy wrote, "We cannot wait to celebrate these incredible individuals, our kindest Kansas Cityans, and their student nominators at this year's 33rd Annual Kindest Kansas Cityan Award on May 5th. This inspiring event evening celebrates the remarkable ripple effect of kindness right here in our community while funding life-saving services for our school-based integrated services program." That was a lot to say. I have invitations for all of you, which we will give you at the conclusion of the board meeting. I have invitations for all of you, which we will give you at the conclusion of the board meeting. So, if you have any questions, we'll take those now.
Any questions of Dr. Moore in this seat?
It's map and of course, assessment time, so I just wanted to say good luck to everybody and thanks. And I know it's a lot of hard work and nerves and everything in between, but...
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Yep.
Eat a good breakfast.
Exactly.
Eat a good breakfast, get some rest.
Good night's sleep.
Take your headphones. That's been the nightly thing at our house, take your headphones.
And they've been doing this since the beginning of the month?
They have, and so the schools are all at different times. And so, just depending on when they're doing it, so it'll go through the middle of May.
And then, there will be a big party.
And then, we'll do some eye-ready, some panorama.
It's a good way to finish off.
Another item to add to Dr. Moore's comments around the CNA program, and that is just to thank Dr. McLeod Walls, as well as, you all know her as William Jewel College President, in addition to Dr. Ragavendra Diga over at Liberty Hospital, their president and CEO, who never once batted an eye in terms of their support financially, but then also from an experiential standpoint for our kiddos. So, the fact that we were able to get this off and running, meet the number that we set out, maybe if not exceed that a little bit. But then, on top of that, to have experiences at Liberty Hospital within the financial piece is really unique. So, I think it's a testament to the community partnerships that we focus on and a fruit of that work over the years, so.
I would, yes, and Colleen Jones is here, and she's done just a heavy lift with this program and has worked with William Jewel. We had some conflicts with student schedules, and we couldn't have all 20 of those students going into the hospital at one time. So, they really worked with us to break those students up into different morning and afternoon groups. So, we appreciate that.
Just a big congratulations though to all of those. And I know Colleen has done a lot of work with this, but just the amount of internships that have become available, the amount of programs for our kids to join and be part of outside their regular school day has multiplied. And I know that that is a lot of work, a lot of going out, visiting with people, explaining the program. So, thank you to all of those who have done that. It's a great, a great thing for our kids to be able to access.
We're currently working on our market value assets for the school year and getting ready to send out badges for all students. So, our goal for this year was 80%. We had 74% last year, our goal was 80%, and I think we'll hit that. But we're working through that, and I'll bring that to the next board meeting.
The librarians conference, appreciate you sharing the staff that give the presentation service. Presentation is something that we can get access to in some format.
Yeah, we can request.
As far as the slide deck?
Yes, yeah, we can talk to Andrew soon.
There's some great topics.
Yes, absolutely, sure. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
Next item then, 6.2. We will welcome Dr. Dixon Seehorn to deliver updates from our equity report.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our newest board member. My report actually is going to be short and sweet because the whole report is really about the building equity cadres. As you know, this was our first year of implementation, and we now have had two sessions, first semester and second semester. And what I wanted to point out again is just the number of participants. When you think about how many people across our system have been a part of conversations with school leaders and their site-based teams. And so, as you can see, we kind of maintain the momentum, if you will, from first semester to second semester in terms of approximately 20% of school leaders participating. And when I say 20%, 20% of the membership was consistent of school leaders, about 44% certified staff, and about 36% classified or support staff. You will note that from first semester to second semester, we had about 20 fewer individuals. That's because we had to actually move the dates around just because of some scheduling situations with the Core Collaborative. And so, that resulted in lower participation because there were also some other scheduling conflicts with some of the members, in particular counselors. So, just wanted to make note of that. We now have a detailed summary report from first semester to second semester from the Core Collaborative. So, we'll use that as the basis of conversations with school leaders as we enter into this end of year for those reflections. And then, we'll use it as a foundation, if you will, for planning for next year because we will implement these again once more next year. And we'll be able to utilize our equity and schools' grant funds to pay for that. And that comes from the Kaufman Foundation. So, just wanted to share that. Another thing I wanted to note, and this came up in our last board meeting, I believe Ms. Reed had asked this question about, in what way we can fold the student voice into all of this work? And so, as we get to the end of the year, I'll have those reflections with school leaders and see how we can fold student voice and participation into those building equity cadres. So, those are the thoughts I wanted to share this evening, and I'm glad we take any questions.
Is there any anecdotal things you're taking in mind right now from the speaker?
Right now, it's in the form of those detailed reports that have come from the facilitators. And I would say, just from hearing back from school leaders and just members of the team, they have found it to be beneficial because again, we've tried to fold it into their belonging goals that are in the school improvement plan. So, if anything, it's really about, the work is meaningful, it's purposeful, and it's allowing them to be more intentional at the grassroots level in their buildings of really gaining some momentum and some traction around belonging for students, and then also staff. I think the biggest win in all of this, and again, this is just from being a part of all those equity conversations, is listening to the teams talk about their own data. And just kind of removing excuses about the data, peeling back the layers, being honest with themselves about, okay, this is what the data looks like for our school. And then, these are things we can do within our own school community to make some progress. So, really, that's more the early anecdotal data. As we dig into the report and then have those end-of-year reflections with school leaders, then I can come back and perhaps share some more anecdotal information. I better run while I can.
Other questions for Dr. Dixon Seehorn?
Just to thank you for following up on that question from last month, I appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
6.3 is our finance report. We're going to hear from Ms. Sullivan several times this evening, so we'll turn it over to her for just a few moments.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker, and good evening. I have one donation tonight to recognize. Donation of packing boxes to the district warehouse valued at $4,314.76 from Vanguard Packaging. These boxes will be available to building staff to use when packing up items to move classrooms for the summer or other things for summer needs of cleaning and whatnot. So, we'd like to thank Vanguard, that's a very generous donation, and helps our classrooms out for summer maintenance and moving around. So, we appreciate that very much. The Senate budget must be completed by May 5th, so we're still anticipating a fully funded formula and a fully funded transportation categorical, which is always something that we watch for this time of the year. Property tax revenue collection rate going strong, 99.2%, so that's great, very excited. We have one more collection date that should be sizable, so very, very good year for us there. The Audit Finance Committee did review documents for this meeting. Their next meeting is a live meeting on May 15th where they will review the preliminary budget document. We have one member whose term is expiring this year, so we will begin the process of taking applications to bring to you for consideration to fill that seat. And they did not have anything to bring to you of concern or note. And as Dr. Tucker indicated, tonight we'll be discussing preliminary expenditure budgets, so that will be next on the agenda for me. But that's all I have for you in my report tonight, unless you have questions for me.
A big thank you to the donation of the cardboard boxes.
Yes.
There are staff members that are going to be dancing.
Absolutely. We do appreciate that.
Makes it much easier.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up then is 6.4, our operations report. We'll turn it over to Mr. Stephen Anderson.
Thank you, just a few items to highlight tonight. First is our crew, is our teams on the operations side are working very much in preparation for summer. Not only just the various capital projects that we'll begin to undertake, but also just preventive maintenance, and then, of course, working with summer school. Also, I'd like to point out that our kids own summer camp, which is open for enrollment, just recently open for enrollment. We're already at 50 above what we had last year, and we still have quite a bit to go. So, really encouraged by those early numbers and expect that this would be a record-breaking year for us. Safety and security surveys, this is mentioned in the operations report. Our team, security team, has been going to each building and campus and spending some time with the folks at each of those sites as we prepare for safety and security enhancements as part of the bond. As you probably recall, we didn't define many of those projects, more set aside an allowance. And so, they're beginning that work, looking at everything from cameras and lighting to doors, to badge access, to entryway enhancements. So, there's a whole host of items that we're looking at. So, appreciate the team putting that work together, and we'll see that kind of trickle in over the next few years. And then last, just kind of a real quick update on the bond and kind of when we'll first see evidence of that, and that starts Monday when you all approved under consent the demolition for the area in and around what will become the Liberty Tennis Courts. And so, we've notified all the folks kind of at the, obviously Liberty High, we've notified Epic. So, you'll start to see some activity there beginning Monday, and we're excited for that. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Anderson? Thank you. 6.5 then, our human resources report, and we will welcome Dr. Delson to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I just have two updates from HR. The first one that was noted in the HR report is that our employees who participate in our health insurance program are eligible for a premium differential, which is annually $600. They do need to meet two prongs to be eligible for that differential. And one of them is their wellness exam, and the other one is a health risk assessment. Say that fast 600 times, right? So, given that we've had almost 140 employees complete both of those prongs, we've had some employees complete one or the other, but not both. So, we're working toward that. We do know statistically that more of our employees complete most of that as we approach the summer, when they have more time, of course, right? So, working toward that. And our wellness coordinator on our HR team reaches out individually to our employees with reminders, which is really terrific, so that our employees can gain that advantage as we move forward. The other item I had is we are closing the gap on hiring. So, just under 10 positions right now with our certified staff that we need to attract. However, remember, it's the spring, so life is in session and it's hiring season. Also, remember, everyone is a recruiter. So, you guys are recruiters, and we're all recruiters for our staff. And one thing you can do to help us, on our Facebook page with Liberty Public Schools Careers, we have found especially with our operations team, if you forward those positions, we've really been able to attract a lot more candidates for those. So, any help you can provide us is terrific.
We should like and subscribe.
Yes, please, all of that helps.
Want to repeat that again?
Liberty Public Schools Careers.
Yes, Liberty Public Schools spelled out on Facebook, Careers.
You want lots of shares, don't you?
I do, I want the shares, the likes, all of it.
Thank you for stepping in on Team Liberty.
Oh, you're welcome, and thanks for everyone who was able to join that day.
You did a nice job of maneuvering through that.
Oh, thank you.
Facilitating.
Thank you, thank you. We missed Ms. Baldwin that day, but I was happy to be a sub that day.
Questions of Dr. Delson?
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly then, as far as the superintendent's report, and I'll hit on a couple of items later on in the agenda, but let's start by again thanking the community. I know we officially approved our election results earlier for question one. And question two, the no tax increase bond issue, as well as the debt service levy transfer, along with recognizing those that were elected and sworn in this evening as far as board members. There's a group that I also want to thank, and that is Lubo Koval, in addition to Kira Montori, Brian Ahart, Amanda Beers, and Carl Cox for their willingness to be placed on the ballot, their time and energy spent as far as campaigning and engaging on matters related to the district. As you all know, preaching to the choir, that is a little bit of a sticking your neck out or leap of faith, whatever you want to call it, but do want to express appreciation to them as well this evening. Couple of other items we're working toward, and we've shared some updates on this, and we're making progress in and around our graduate profile with the help of our Innovation and Learning Department, working on a series of progressions to provide greater clarity to the knowledge, skills, and dispositions contained within that graduate profile. And so, you can anticipate later this spring into the summer and then being rolled out into the fall semester, a set of progressions that then will speak to those skills and dispositions that appear on the grad profile, what that looks like for students, but then also what that looks like for teachers, whether they're facilitating instruction or learning, or trying to apply across our continuum, pre-K through grade 12, as we identify what those progressions look like at each level. So, we're excited about that work. In addition, provided information with our strategic plan, as you all know, each year we recognize those accomplishments, identify those things to carry forward into the next school year, but then also what are those items to be abandoned? And so, we started with the GND contract about four years ago. Hard to believe that this year wraps up year four. And so, we'll be working on two pieces. One is to bring forward into the fall semester a revised, updated strategic plan for the 23-24 school year. But then, as we navigate the 23-24 school year, also looking at re-engaging our community at that five-year mark in and around. Are we on the right track as it relates to our vivid vision, our graduate profile, solicit additional input and feedback? So, we'll be working closely with GND associates. We've already started some conversations with them, bringing information to the board as it relates to refreshing our plan for next year, but then looking beyond next year as to what that next strategic plan effort looks like in engaging our community further. We're also looking at convening our Vision 2020 Committee, as it has been formally referred to in the past. We're probably going to refresh that a little bit in terms of the name. But we have a date scheduled for April 27th, a week from this Thursday, in which we've invited about 120 stakeholders that are representative of various groups that engage with us from special ed parents to diversity and equity inclusion families, to dyslexia parents, to parents that have engaged at the middle level in and around project-based learning through focus groups, engaging some students, as well as some Liberty Public School staff. On that agenda, we have a couple of pieces. One is to be able to revisit our charter and refresh that, but at the same time, be able to look into community engagement efforts as we look at board policies later this evening that ask us to develop a community engagement plan. We're going to engage or leverage Vision 2020 to help participate with that effort, as well as provide information in and around the Success Ready Students Network and the Demonstration Project or Innovation Waiver that we've been talking about since January of last year, and engaging them in and around that work as well. So, we look forward to convening that group, as well as rebranding a little bit as we think about transitioning into the 23-24 school year. Another item that is nearing the finish line is the legislative session here in Missouri in Jefferson City. We're down to just a few more weeks left of that, as which kind of the shoot starts to narrow a little bit as far as all of the bills that were previously prefiled back in December, if you'll remember, December 1st. A lot of those are being kind of funneled into the final aspects, culminating in potentially omnibus bill, things like that, that we're watching in both chambers. So, be on the lookout for updates from Missouri School Boards Association and other groups as they provide information as this final stretch of the legislative session lines down. With that, would entertain any questions that the board may have.
How do you come up with 120 stakeholders?
That is just a number.
I mean, how do you find them?
We asked, it's a great question. We started with the members that participated previously. And so, we've had it for some time. It morphed into some of our return-to-learn committees during the pandemic. Starting with that group, several have exited, whether they're students that have graduated, families that have moved on that no longer have students in the district. Starting, that's kind of the base group, but then also branching out to see what other committees and stakeholders that we have that might want to engage in that work. So, we worked administratively last week in reaching out to Jessica Mize, a mentor, in addition to Dr. Tony Cook, in addition to Innovation and Learning, just to be able to pull people forward. Another thing that we're doing, kind of a side note with our community engagement work, DLT this last week, we were having every building and every department identify the types of community engagement that they have based types of community engagement that they have based on those four categories that are contained within that plan, that then come with their committee membership, their agendas, their work, but then also inviting others that might be interested in participating. So we have had a few reach out and say, hey, I'd like to engage. If you can find an opportunity for me, plug me in. We keep a tally of those names, and anytime we can fold them in. We've cast it fairly wide, but at the same time, times in the past when we've cast it that wide, and we have few show up as disappointing, but we're hoping for a good turnout. So, any questions? Other questions?
You mentioned the strategic planning, kind of, for the T minus one year.
Right.
Load there. So what is the typical time span? What has been kind of the time span of that in the past of?
Traditionally, and again, typically in school districts, it's the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, your CSEP, and that is typically a five-year plan that historically is kind of.
As far as when we would hit the start of it, to be ready for, as one completes, how, I guess, the sequence of.
Sure.
Timing of one wrapping up and us having a plan for the next one.
Right, and I think that's typically it. It's that five-year horizon.
Right.
Right, so typically you would have a five-year CSEP, and then in that fifth year of that fifth-year plan, begin thinking about that next iteration, so that you roll into year six with a revision or with an update. I don't anticipate, based on what we've talked about administratively, and certainly conversations to come with the board, that we would have much of a deviation as far as going with a completely different approach, because we've had some success in reviewing it annually as compared to going back to a five-year fixed plan, right? To be able to be flexible. That's how we wrote the original RFP five years ago. As we're thinking about it moving forward, and we'll have more discussions about this as we think about our study sessions and the board retreat, planning for next year. Do we want to go to market with a full RFP with some specifications in and around that? Or do we want to enter into a contract agreement with GND associates with additional engagement from the community, certainly, but then more of a modified approach? If we're satisfied with the work that they've provided and administered, would we have then? So does that answer your question?
Yeah, the timing of that decision, yes, of the contract, whether we go new or forward standard, is that something that would be next spring?
We've kind of, we put it to calendar probably early winter, as far as our tentative dates.
Okay.
So Mr. Anderson and I spoke with Scott Fuller and David Gregory from GND and Associates to be able to calendar that, where we would start initiating that community engagement in and around that time. So the refresh of the current strategic plan will happen early fall, as we typically do, October, November, bringing that before the board. There's a lot of work to do between now and then as far as onboarding new administrators, getting them up to our processes and speed and how that works, but that's our tentative timeline for now.
So unfinished business?
You have a series of policy updates, and really there are a couple of sets here. The first of which are policies for adoption on first read, and these are some minor language changes in and around policy GCBDA and GDDBA that we initiated, just to provide some greater clarification in and around professional staff short-term leaves and support staff leaves. The second set you saw earlier last month, in and around the policies that are listed there that are being brought forward to you this evening for your consideration. And then lastly, you have one form, KC AF1, that we're just mentioning this evening, and then a procedure to rescind, which is procedure IGCD AP1, in which language regarding virtual courses and enrollment is picked up in other policies that you're looking at this evening for second read. The other thing that I would point out is that as it relates to policies in and around community engagement, policy KC, the ask this evening is to approve that policy language, understanding that the work follows as far as us finalizing an engagement plan that will come before you at a later date. Statutorily, that plan has to be approved by July 1st of this summer 2023, and so we have a couple of months left to be able to work through that, leveraging Vision 2020 and other groups to be able to work on that, but would present those to you this evening for your consideration.
Questions? Comments?
Just per our earlier discussion, I just, my understanding was that the policies for adoption of first read aren't changing our practices, it's just kind of further clarifying our policies to make sure they're consistent with our practices.
That's correct. And specifically from the Missouri School Boards Association, they have multiple iterations of these policies. So BDDB dash two regarding agendas, of course, we're looking at the piece or the policy consideration that includes consent agenda. So there's that version for boards of education that incorporated consent agenda. Similarly, under BDDH regarding public participation at board meetings, that particular version that we've looked at is for those districts that do have a designated public comment period. I know we spoke about that last month. Whereas other districts looking at different versions of both of those policies, so.
And of these policies that were in a book, how many other, how many of them have, will have administrative procedures prepared or modified as a result of us approving meetings?
Typically, whenever MSBA has a revision to a procedure that accompanies the policy, so to my knowledge, what you're looking at.
The revision here would not necessarily prompt a revision to the administrative procedure.
If it did prompt a revision to the administrative, we would ever see it from Missouri School Boards Association.
Any other questions?
Well, I haven't seen any of it. Okay.
And those should, those should be posted in terms of open session content.
Okay.
So for what that's worth, but yeah.
Any more welcome to it, Steve?
Okay.
Understandable, it's a lot.
I mean, it was a quarter dot policy, GCBDA, GDBDA, BDDB dash two, BDDH dash one, IGCD, IGCD A, JEC A dash two, KC, Form KC, dash AF1, and rescind administrative procedure IGCD dash AP1.
Nice.
Second.
Denise?
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
abstain.
Motion carries.
Nicely done, Mr. Bartlow, and now on to new business with a compensation plan. Wait a minute, did I skip? Oh, I did, I'm sorry. Drove right past it.
And this evening, that is actually just as a placeholder, and that we've spoken about that previously. Originally, we had some motion language in there, but we're not ready for that recommendation yet. That'll come later in May. And so what I wanted to mention and just remind the group is that this kind of goes back to the work initiated by the State Board of Education, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in which last fall, the Board of Education approved the district's participation in an innovation zone, that then now is getting us to the point of having a question as to whether or not the district would participate in a demonstration project or innovation waiver. So that's just as a reminder, a refresher. Couple items you have is sample language in a resolution that then we will look to bring forward in the month of May, in addition to the most recent draft of the demonstration project. Since the last time we met, and this is really the updated portion, we have engaged with a few different groups internally. Our principals meeting the other day was held, in which I provided an update around MSIP in terms of that transition from MSIP V to MSIP VI, as well as information around the Success Ready Students Network. In addition to that engagement with principals, we engaged with our Elementary Curriculum Council, as well as our Secondary Curriculum Council on separate occasions to be able to talk through MSIP V to MSIP VI, the Success Ready Students Network piece. Coming up is that engagement with Vision 2020, as we shared. In addition to that, we have, is it the Heads of State, or no, the Professional Development Committee, thank you, Dr. Westall, and engaging them as well in and around this effort moving forward, just to make sure that we're socializing, sharing the information, but then also soliciting feedback through those conversations. So we'll share more as more evolves. Earlier this afternoon, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education announced that they are soliciting a second round of districts interested in participating in the innovation zones. So last year was really cohort one of those districts willing to participate, of which we had about 50 in the two innovation zones. The third innovation zone is kind of the support agencies or associations. And then this next year, they'll be soliciting districts interested in participating in cohort two. So with that, would certainly entertain any questions, but again, just an item as a placeholder this evening under unfinished business.
Are you any other local districts that you're considering?
Most recently, the Summit School District unanimously approved with their board action participation in the demonstration project. That's the only one that I've heard of. I know they're on a timeline to try to have districts participate or decide by the end of May at the latest, because the board, State Board meeting is scheduled for June 6th, in which districts that are, board meeting is scheduled for June 6th, in which districts that are participating or wanting to participate will be shared with the State Board of Education. We should have more between now and then, so we'll keep you posted on that as well.
And if a teacher is interested that isn't involved in learning more, that isn't on any of the committees that you mentioned, where should we direct them?
And so everything has a dedicated website. Everything is posted there from all of the meetings dating back to really the work group that was initiated last spring. From our meeting minutes to our presentations, slide deck, videos, there's all sorts of information contained there, but then also within Diligent, if they're interested in looking at the resolution, or they're interested in reading more about what the demonstration project will encompass. So, thank you for that.
When is the final, final, final draft?
That would be the presentation of the State Board on June 6th, in which they may have some changes between now and then, then being desig.
Right.
But then ultimately, something might come out of that State Board meeting that then would cause an amendment to that draft document. So I think they're close from that standpoint.
That's why we're moving forward.
That is one of the reasons, yes, to look at a different date for the board retreat, yes.
Thanks for all of your work on this. This has been, essentially for people that are listening, this is, if I remember correctly, there were three or four people working on this initially, and then people over time moved off, and so you've really been a leader in this area for the state, and so that's very much appreciated.
Learning as we go, for sure. So, thank you.
Now do we go to new business?
If you're ready.
I'm ready. Compensation plan looks enticing.
So you have multiple items uploaded into your packet this evening, and want to start by thanking Cindy Sullivan, her team, along with Dr. Belson, from an HR standpoint, and then working closely with Team Liberty, a team that meets pretty regularly to talk through budget-related, calendar-related, just quality of work-life items over the course of the year. When I'm with them, I express my gratitude to them every time I can, because they do a tremendous lift on behalf of the district that hopefully makes our conversations at the board table informed, but certainly easy to navigate. So this evening, you have several items that are uploaded for you. As a reminder, when we come to this point in the year, in the month of April, these are presented for first read. And so between now and the month of May, please take time to dive in, identify questions that you might have, and you can certainly reach out to myself, or Cindy, or Deborah, with any questions that you may have, so that we can respond to you. As we focus on the month of May, we'll come back around with final recommendations and your consideration. If we have some modifications or adjustments between now, then we'll certainly mention that. I won't speak to every document that's uploaded, but you do have several revisions to salary schedules to reflect the 23-24 school year and recommendations that were pushed forward by Team Liberty. To hit on the highlights of the recommendations, there are really kind of six categories that make up the total estimated costs associated with the recommendations for staff salaries moving into 23-24. I want to preface that by, again, thanking Team Liberty, thanking our Administrative Salary and Welfare Committee, because they have a role to play in this as well, but then also thanking the community in and around that debt service levy transfer, and the ability to move 50 cents from Fund III over to Fund I in our operating side. That then brings us to our recommendation this evening. So as we were approaching Election Day, we were really working on two scenarios with Cindy's help in communicating that with Team Liberty as far as scenario A and scenario B. We're fortunate that we're bringing forward a scenario that is a little bit heftier, so to speak, but the six areas that are incorporated and the costs associated with each, the first is to be able to fund all salary schedules with a vertical step and horizontal step movement to the cost of $1,699,597. The second is to enhance the certificated salary schedules by 8% and adjust our base teacher pay up to $43,200. The estimated financial impact of that is $4,623,976. The third item then is on our classified salary schedules, to be able to implement those recommendations that were brought forward by our Evergreen Compensation Study. You may recall, we were working through that with Team Liberty. The cost of that is estimated at $2,408,118. Item four then is implementing the professional 10 and 12-month salary schedule recommended by the Evergreen Salary Study, $292,438 is the anticipated estimate there as far as costs. The other piece is enhancements to the extra-duty salary schedule to the tune of a 5% increase for this next year, at a total cost of $115,540. Lastly, enhancement to the administrator's salary schedule, a total of 7% increase, that estimated cost is $667,269. All of that encompasses a total cost of $9,806,938. And just to make a note, these estimates did not include the cost of PSRS or peers contributions. So that is a summary that's contained within that first document as far as salary recommendations to the board. The second page is a little bit of a deeper explanation in and around each of those six items that I relate to you. So again, you'll see those in May for your final consideration. Those factors have been incorporated into our budget projections that then inform our expenditure conversation here a little bit later on, but then you'll also see that reflected as we think about May in terms of a preliminary budget, and then certainly finally in June as we finalize the budget for FY '24 of next year. So with that said, would certainly entertain any questions from the board?
So with $43,200 as our base, where does that put us in the area for salaries? Whomever.
I can speak to that briefly and then have Deborah and Cindy. That is the conversation that's currently happening within the metro area, as everyone is having similar conversations. I know other districts have had their board meetings already, and having, you know, their preliminary look at it. I was on the phone earlier this afternoon with Park Hill, and you may recall, some districts in the Northland were able to do their debt service levy transfer last year, or the year previously, of which they were able to make their moves from a salary standpoint at that point. So they may have been higher than usual increases, whereas now their increases are back to kind of that normal range of 3% to 5%. Spoke with Park Hill specifically, right? And so now that we're making these adjustments and recommendations to be a little bit more, we're going to be on par with our peers, we feel like. I don't know if there's anything else to add, Dr. Belson or Ms. Sullivan?
I was just going to say, all boards are meeting, this is the time near the spring. I have an HR meeting Thursday for Liberty Schools, so we'll probably.
It's a bit like a poker game, where people kind of hold their cards close, and so we'll get as good of information as we can, but even then, some of it's elusive.
And to Team Liberty and Cindy, what an amazing job they were able to pull off, because they couldn't make any decisions before we had the election. And they met two days after the election and were able to have this discussion. And I know they did the what-if. And I know they did the what-if discussion, but there wasn't any we can until we had the election. And so the amount of time that you all spent on this is amazing, and me personally, thank you because that's a lot of work. And I appreciate the discussions, particularly the ones on the extra duty pay, and I know that will be continuing next year. But I did have one question on the Evergreen. Was Evergreen's original suggestion to like do that over a couple of years and were able to do it all at once, or did I misunderstand?
Evergreen would always recommend you do it in one year. In the past, we haven't been financially able to do it all in one year and have spread it out over multiple years. So regardless of the outcome of the election, that was Team Liberty's number one priority is to get that redone in one year.
Okay.
Problem being that if it's parcelled out over multiple years, that second, third year of the data is really obsolete or dated.
I get that.
Yeah, and it's hard to be able to chase that.
Makes total sense, but thank you.
Any other questions?
So Evergreen was used as a basis of recommendation for classified and for the professional 10 and 12-month salary. Was there any outside source used for the certified salary schedule? Did we have any other outside guidance or basis?
Certified salary schedules are much easier to do on our own because the teacher salary schedule is very similar district to district. A classified salary schedule district to district is not so similar. So to be able to put that all together and the job alike and mid-max and then it's just much easier to have an outside person working on that, looking at job descriptions and it's a very heavy lift to do that schedule.
And I know in years past, we've also, correct me if I'm wrong, we've also alternated compensation studies where we've had a deeper dive on certificated and then a deeper dive on classified, if I remember correctly. I know we've worked with Evergreen in the past, we've worked with C-Biz in the past. So we tend to, with Team Liberty's help, focus on different areas, but then we come back around to those other pieces as time permits and as kind of that progression occurs.
I want to go on to this, and it's Team Liberty for certificate is Greater Kansas City, the COOP. The Super Junior and the HR team, we all do a comparison of what districts provide and what the total of course might be to that. But that gig is always a year behind, right? Because we wait for votes to approve. We also had MSTAA and MNEA provide kind of the same analysis, certificated information, but once again, it's a year behind. So it's kind of all that same gathering and all of that information is pretty much on district.
And that, the MSTAA and MNEA piece is also statewide, so it's not just relegated to our region, but they both do great work as far as compiling all that information in the districts. So, okay. Again, you'll see this in May. If you have questions or anything else that you would like for us to chase down for further clarification, please let us know.
The preliminary expenditure budget update.
Yes, so last month, we started with the revenue conversation, and so this month, we'll come back around and hone in on expenditures again just to relay. May, you'll see a preliminary budget with final action in June for FY '24 school district budget. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Sullivan for the next few minutes.
Great, thank you, Dr. Tucker. As he indicated, this is going to be a super high-level look tonight, just to let you know kind of what we're thinking. We're not going to dive as deep as we will in May when you see the complete budget book, preliminary budget book before you. So this slide is the complete budget, and we're going to talk by object. That's why we're doing it at the high level. We'll break down each one of those objects in a slide so I can tell you some high points and low points, but the projected total budget at this point, keeping in mind that a lot of this may change with when we're able to issue bonds because we will have additional expenditures that may be brought into this year and additional revenues that will be brought into this year. So the outcome of the timing of that will also change this document from now to May. So I'm just, that's something to also be aware of. But the proposed expenditure budget at this point in the year is $203,608,477. And this slide shows the progression from the past four years plus this current estimate. And you can see how it has changed over the years. You go back to 2019 and 20, and it was a little higher than what we're projecting it to be for FY '24. And that's primarily due to the fact that we refunded some bonds. So you'll see debt service is a little bit higher, and we also were finishing up bonding projects, so capital outlay was higher in 19 and 20. And then you'll see in 2021, we also had a few more bonding or capital outlays as we were finishing up wrapping up bonding projects. Then you get back into 22, 23, and they are representative of more normal years, so to speak. The large jump then in 23, 24 is primarily due to the increase in the compensation package that we just talked about. So that's where you'll see the primary differences. Let's talk real briefly about employee salaries. I'm not going to spend too much time here since you just heard the majority of that. So we are projecting a $10 million increase, and that's a 10% overall increase in salaries for all salary schedules. Certificated salaries account for approximately 69% of all of our salaries in the district, and that is 61% of our operating budget. And I also want to note that these figures are all based upon our current employee population. And as we know, we're still hiring, and we typically hire people that cost less than people that are leaving. That's just historically the way it rolls. So you will see this number change once we do employee cost projections in May, and we have a more accurate count of those that are coming in versus those that are leaving. So we will have a slightly different number at that point when we have the system all updated for the latest and greatest hires that we have. So that's always something to note when we're talking this early in the year about salaries.
Cindy, when it says salaries, does that include like hourly wages as well?
It does. It's every paid employee in the Liberty Public School District. Yes.
And that also changes in the fall, given certificated staff gaining additional credit and movement on the schedule. So I mean, it's constantly moving.
Yep.
We bring those updates to you as well.
The vertical and horizontal movement, I do budget for those based on historical data, but again, you know, you could just have an onslaught of teachers that decided to go get their masters, and so it could be very different than historical values, but we do build that into our budget process. But that is all accounted for, so every salary in the district, all extra duty, all miscellaneous time pays, hourly and exempt employees are included in this figure. And the benefit piece that goes along with that is 17% of the proposed annual budget and 18.4% of the annual operating budget. We're expecting around a 7.4% increase overall in that. Most of that obviously is due to the enhanced salaries that we are projecting. The benefits do include retirement, VICA Medicare, medical dental vision, workers' comp, disability, and employment insurance and life. We met with our broker regarding our proposed workers' comp, and we actually did very well in that area, and we'll experience about an 8.9% decrease. So that kind of offsets some of that other increasing costs, and that's a nod to HR for the good things they do in keeping those claims to a minimum and that our staff are really taking note of our safe schools and things like that and doing what we should be doing to keep those claims down to a minimum. So you don't often get a decrease in insurance, so that's always a welcome one to hear. We will be meeting with Holmes Murphy on May 16th for our pre-renewal meeting for our medical dental and vision. Our utilization is up a bit, so we will probably most likely see an increase in medical dental and vision. Currently, I've budgeted 10% for that. I'm afraid it's probably kind of low, but we'll see, but that's typically what we try and budget in there. But we still, our hope and Team Liberty's hope is that we can continue to have two fully paid options for our employees along with a couple of buy-up options. So that's what we'll be looking at. That typically takes place, that renewal conversation really starts up in earnest in August when Team Liberty gets back. So it's not that far off that we will be having those meetings with Team Liberty. So if you do come and are a part of that, those are good conversations that will show you a lot of the work that Team Liberty does in addition to the compensation piece of Purchase services constitute 10% of our annual budget and 11% of operating. They are actually budgeted to decrease just by $700,000 this year, and there's a lot of ins and outs and ups and downs, things just kind of changing place, but we're not really changing programmatically many things, so purchase services just will tend to be pretty flat. Some of the notable changes that we know right now, as I indicated earlier, would be insurance, which is the property, liability, and cyber. Those are all projected to go up slightly. Deferred maintenance will actually be going down because some of those projects will be moved into bond work. So that did go down by about $600,000 over this current year. And one other thing to note, transportation invoices were paid in July that were for June this year, so that was just totally a timing thing, but that drove up our purchase services expenditures this year. So for next year, that timing will not occur, so we will be paying invoices in the correct year. And so that causes your expenditures to go down from one year to the next, so it's totally a timing thing. So that also accounts for a couple of the dollars of decrease there. Supplies and materials, they're 9% of the proposed annual total budget and 10% of the annual operating budget, and they are projected to increase by about a million and a half. A lot of this is largely due to inflation and the cost of utilities. Out of that million and a half, $640,000 of that is utilities, primarily gas. Gas has skyrocketed in the last two months, and we anticipate that that will carry over into next year a little bit. We're also buying some BN uniforms, curriculum PLTW supplies, OER tech tools, warehouse allowances for summer maintenance, and tech supplies for media trailers, speakers and cameras. So all of those things, inflation is being felt a little bit in that area. So we will experience a little bit of an increase there, anticipated. And capital outlay is approximately 2% of our proposed annual budget, and we are going to see a slight increase from 4.3 million to 4.6 million in 2024. And Mr. Anderson has shared the capital plan with you. It includes some bus purchases and various other site renovations that are not included in the bond, but pretty typical year for capital next year. And finally, debt service, that constitutes approximately 8% of the proposed total annual budget, and as you know, debt service is used to repay the principal interest on bonds used to construct and renovate schools and district facilities. So right now, we're budgeted to see a little bit of an increase because we have a payment come on, we have some payments come off, but you will see that schedule of how that all plays, comes into play when you see the complete budget book. This is one of those funds that will be changing with the issuance of bonds and the repayment of lease purchases brought into debt, so look for this one to be a little bit different, perhaps next month in May when we do see the total budget book. So back where we started, we know that changes to this schedule from year to year primarily come from salaries and benefits. Supplies do, and increases in utilities and purchase services due to inflation. So I did want to show it to you in a different way. Sometimes this is easier to see, and you'll note that in the far left in the fiscal year 20, the second bar or the second color from the top, the turquoise, is a little bit bigger. So that's the, when we had bond projects. So you'll know when we look at the total annual budget, not operating budget, that is very hard to compare year to year because in years that we do have bond outlays, it drastically makes that bar bigger than the others. So this one is just not always the best one to look at in years of bond activity. Here is the operating budget, which we talked, as I went through the slides, I talked briefly about those. The operating budget is $182,475,020. That's a 7.6% increase over prior year, majority of that due to salaries and benefits. And then here is the bar graph for that one, and you just want to keep in mind that 2021 is a COVID year, and so it's a little lower than the rest, just primarily because we had withholdings and budget expenditures due to potential state withholdings. So that one looks a little bit different than the rest, but by and large, it's a pretty steady increase in budget years. So that's what I have for you tonight. Like I said, the very high-level look. We'll talk a little bit more in depth in May when we have the whole budget book presentation, but by and large, things are pretty status quo from this year to next year with the expenditures, with the exception of the salaries and benefits piece. So.
Hey Cindy, remember where does substitute teaching go?
Purchase services. Anything else?
I appreciate seeing you on that. I appreciate the pressure.
Good.
I really like it.
Well, and that's why I try to present different pictures because everybody likes it a little bit different way, and it speaks to people differently, so.
When I asked you today about pictures, you actually like got them all together.
I guess.
I need numbers and pictures.
Pictures.
I like the borgrea.
Thank you.
Other questions, Cindy? Similarly, if you have other thoughts or questions or inquiries, shoot them our way between now and May. Again, May preliminary budget document and final approval in the month of June.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
So the Series 2023 General Obligation Bonds market?
Yeah. So we had a good start. We had the exciting part of the evening, right?
Been looking forward to this.
The next two items are a result then of our election on April 4th. 8.3, as Ms. Reed mentioned, is the Series 2023 General Obligations Bond market resolution. You're going to see that this evening for a first read. We're going to bring that back to you for action and consideration at our study session in May. We typically do not do that at a study session, but this is an effort to try to get to market faster in some other districts and some issues that they were able to pass early in the April election as well. The second item you'll see is 8.4, and we'll speak to that one as well, and that's the resolution directing the redemption of certain outstanding lease participation certificates of the district. That is a motion recommendation this evening to try to realize some savings as compared to wait a month later and actually have some added cost. But we're going to welcome Joe Kender to walk us through that. I think most of you know Joe. He is with Stiefel along with other partners that we've worked with over the years, but we'll turn it over to Joe to kind of work us, walk us through these two items this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Tucker, and it's good to be here. Let me say, congratulations. I know the amount of work that went into this, and I know passing two questions in one election, I know what that takes. It takes a lot, particularly with the language for the levy transfer. So congratulations to you all. Good day for the children in Liberty Public Schools and the children that haven't gotten in the program yet. in the program yet, so great day. This slide deck is 31 slides. Typically, I take about 10 minutes a slide. I'm going to try to beat that one, really, really, beat that record significantly. But for those of you who, who know me and know how we like to work, we don't typically like to work with urgency, and the reason why is because anything that you do urgently in a market that is unpredictable typically isn't going to work out in your favor. But there are times where moving as quickly as we can can be beneficial, and I will make a recommendation toward the end of the presentation that is essentially what Dr. Tucker summarized, which is that you are taking action at your May 2nd board meeting in a slightly unique way to what you're compared to, or what you're used to. The genesis or the, the idea behind that is, as Dr. Tucker mentioned, that we've got some favorable market conditions, more than just some of the things that have gone on market-wide, but also individual to the state of Missouri. And we also have some ability, for the first time ever, to earn some money in your capital projects fund, where that money will be deposited when you issue those bonds. So we want to make sure we can get that, those dollars to your operating fund. You didn't spend a lot of time talking about your debt service fund in your budget presentation, rightfully so. We designed that so that that is not a problem, and that hopefully you'll never have to have an issue with that, and we'll show you that. But we know that ultimately, at the end of the day, you've got to educate your kids, and we want to make sure we're taking care of those operating dollars. So any bit of interest that you all can earn in those projects funds to be able to do additional projects means money you don't have to spend on capital outlays in the future, or at least mitigate some of that. So we're trying to be cognizant of all those things as we work through this. Learning objectives, right? We're here to school, so we're going to talk about a few things. Number one, I'm going to skip altogether. If you need help going to sleep tonight, please, please, please read number one, but it just brags on us, and it's something that I'm almost required to do. Number two, how do schools access cash for facilities improvements? Because we have an aspect of this where we're actually what we call repurchasing lease debt, or really what it means is shifting lease debt from your capital projects fund, from your operations budget, and putting it into that dedicated debt service fund. We want to just take a minute to go over, refresh, for those of you who know this, maybe for those of you not as familiar, hopefully get a little bit of a lesson there and, and some information. We want to make sure that we're educating and informing and empowering you all to make decisions. I will make a recommendation tonight, but whether you take my recommendation or not is not the end of the world, and you don't, do not have to move this quickly if you feel uncomfortable, but we want to make sure that we're giving you the information you need to make those decisions. Long-range finance and facility planning, you've already talked about it. You do it better than, as, as good or better than anybody in the state, you really do. And I'm, I'm not providing lip service on that, but just give you a little bit on what we do when we work with your administration, with you all, to come forward to the plan, and then how we come together, just so you know that this isn't a plan we put together in a couple of weeks for you. How do we model future issues and conditions? Most of you have seen our executive summaries, you know a lot of that stuff, we'll briefly cover that. We'll cover what your long-range improvements potential could be as you go into your next set of talking about what the future of Liberty Public Schools looks like. So we just give you an idea. That is not a roadmap, it's not a plan, it's nothing more than just a, hey, this is how your debt is structured, this is what options you might have moving forward. And then that recommendation to move things up and move as quickly as we can, particularly on an issue of this size. We're, we're great, we're wonderful, okay. So there's really two ways that schools can borrow money in the state of Missouri. One is through general obligation bonded debt. That's what you have to go to the voters for. We suspend democracy in Missouri for that and require a 4/7th majority to pass. There is a cap on that. You got close to your cap, so you are allowed to have debt outstanding at any one time up to 15% of your assessed value. So you could have gone a little bit higher than what you, you did with your, with this current issue, but we'd have to be mindful of that cap, but then we also have to make sure that your debt service levy can make those payments, right? We can't, even if you had the cap, we can't go out and issue all this debt that you cannot pay. And your dedicated levy, your debt service levy is designed as a tool to be able to utilize that in the future in what we call these no-tax rate bond issues, so that you can just basically extend your tax rate as you move on. The other way to do debt in Missouri or to borrow money to get projects done is through certificated debt. Like many suburban school districts, you have lease debt. It's largely wrapped up in the fact that you didn't have enough capacity to build a high school at the time that that was built. When that high school was built, you knew you'd have to phase that in, and some of that would have to be done over lease, not unlike any other high school or any other school district trying to build a high school. It's a big, expensive project. One of the things that we're doing with this GO is repurchasing that debt or shifting it over to general obligation debt, and it's going to save you, I think, over $5 million, save, well, save you, save your taxpayers over $5 million. So not only is it freeing up operational capital for you to deploy towards those programming and staffing needs that you have, but it's also going to save your taxpayers' dollars. So this is kind of a win-win. But when we talk, you know, I'm not going to flip back and forth between the debts too often, but what we're talking about tonight is that general obligation bonded debt that has a dedicated debt service levy, that you can only use those tax revenues to pay off bricks and mortar debt that has been issued. Our deal process here is gonna, this is again, just something for you to look at, just so you know that we're not doing, you know, things willy-nilly or just with a couple people in our office. This is, believe it or not, you'll have almost 500 people at Steeple touch your deal by the time it's all said and done. When the rubber meets the road, what's execution look like? What are we doing? We're breaking up that $120 million into $5,000 increments and essentially auctioning, auctioning those $5,000 increments off to the investors willing to pay the highest price. How do we do that? We've got almost 400, what we call institutional bond salesmen, who cover over 300,000 open investor accounts from all levels, from the vanguards and the black rocks that you hear about that manage humongous trust funds, all the way down to individuals like those of us in this room, to try to find people who are willing to pay the highest price, which is what for you, what that means for you is the lowest possible year, yield, or the lowest possible interest cost. So that's what Steeple does, that's what we're here to talk about. We also obviously engage in your planning and helping you with some of those things. What is long-range finance and facility planning? It's something we engage in quite often. Really what we're trying to get to is we're trying to craft projects in the now that allow you to accomplish as many goals and objectives as you have as a board without hamstringing your future ability to do projects within the constructs of what you're looking to do. That's probably way too complicated of a description, but the biggest thing we're trying to do is guess at future conditions in your district, so that we can give you a good idea or a good roadmap of your options moving forward when it comes to capital projects. And of course, we talk holistically when we talk to districts. We've got those four funds, they're really separate, and three in particular is separate, and that's mainly where we operate. But in things like levy transfers that we've been doing for, I think, a dozen or more years now, we want to be cognizant that all of the tax revenue that you get in the door is important and critical, and we want to make sure we're allocating those resources in a way that best fits you and your community and your students. So that's the biggest thing we're doing. Every long-range plan we have looks different. It's different because every community is different, because every board has a different set of goals and objectives. We make sure that you're staying legal and that we feel that you can achieve the goals within your plan that we set. How do we model those future issues and conditions? The biggest thing for you folks is that, in the debt service fund anyway, is that 93% to 95% of your revenue coming in the door to pay off general obligation debt is local taxpayer money. And so we're focused on your assessed value, which is what drives those revenues through the door. And the biggest thing that we need to do is model those future conditions. A lot of times, we look at historical perspectives, a lot of times... Going back to like the 1950s, and yield curve just means what you would pay. Going back to like the 1950s, and yield curve just means what you would pay in your debt. It looked like this for a long, long time, and then it came like this, and then in 2012, it went to the ground. And then it stayed on the ground for a long time, and then jumped up and went down at 14, and went down at 16, and went down at 18, and went down at 20, and now we've come up a little bit, but we're still way below over here. So we're in good shape, and you're still in a good, you know, market to borrow money, but we're trying to make sure that we are cognizant of the fact that when we're assuming that what future interest rate conditions are going to look like, we're going to go more towards the 60, 70 years of historical values we had, as opposed to the Great Recession and after, which we think is an anomaly, but I've been saying for 12 years, interest rates have to come up, and they are a little bit, but they've stalled here. So the biggest thing that we talked about, growth rates, so we have assumed a growth over the next 33 years, which encompasses two subsequent potential bond issues. Again, just hypothetical for you to, to look at. We have assumed growth over the next 33 years that would pay those three issues that is equal to the debt, the growth you've had over the previous 18 years. What does that mean? Not a whole lot. It's half the growth that you've had, give or take, but that includes the Great Recession. So in a 20-year snapshot of the school district, or in this case, 18-year snapshot of the school district, it might be the worst 18 years in terms of assessed value growth, in terms of the, the actual thing that drives revenue for you all, that we could look at and pick over the history of this school district. So we feel like those assumptions are really conservative. We're also assuming 3% growth moving forward. We've got a CPI that's at 6%, 7%. The growth, we assume, you are a growing community, so we do want to make sure we're accounting for that, but largely what we, what we want to account for is just the time value of money. We don't want to think that you're going to grow 10% a year or 20% a year every year and start getting into amortizations and bond issues that you're not going to be able to get done if the economy turns around. That's the biggest thing we're looking to do. On the interest rate side, you already heard that, stress testing the current issue. So we always go in and look at what happens, what's the worst-case scenario where we could still pay the debt on this current issue based on how we've structured it? And the, the total is that you could lose essentially half of your assessed value between now and 2043 and not have to raise your taxes. Now, you are required by law to levy an amount sufficient to, sufficient to make those payments. So if your levy has to be $6...
I was talking to Sullivan about, and Dr. Tucker, is that we, prior to the election, as we saw some dominoes fall, we decided to go ahead and get a lot of the, the back work done should the election pass in terms of drafting documents and getting through some of our disclosure and due diligence processes and some of those other things. Because we had some interest rates backing up, and because we had an interesting market, we wanted to make sure we had that option available to you. Now, we didn't tell you that because we didn't know who was superstitious. We don't want to say, hey, we've got all the tax corruption ready if you pass the bond issues. So we, we just wanted to hold that back a little bit. But one of the things we've got, and you can see this chart up here, the blue line is essentially an interest rate curve from year zero to year, third, it can sound far, they went out, you can only go out 20 years. The blue line is where things were as of, let's say, January, no, March 1st. So March 1st, you were borrowing all across that curve at that higher rate, those higher rates on the blue curve. The orange curve are the rates as of yesterday, or that orange line are the rates as of yesterday. A lot of that's being driven by the collapse of Silicon Valley Bank, Silicon Valley Bank, however you pronounce it, and some of the other banks being put on negative credit watch. But we've had some other things, like the Fed Chairman Powell come out and make a couple comments along the lines of, hey, we're still going to get to 6% on the overnight rate. What does that mean to you all? Not a whole lot. It just means that they're looking to raise rates that could potentially filter into and probably will filter into our market, but they're acknowledging the Fed that controls some of this, that they may have to slow down for a period of time. Maybe a short period of time, but they're not going to be able to continue raising rates. And so our market is kind of backed up a little bit now. It went up today as a result of some trading and treasuries that happened last week in a light week. We're hoping that we've stabilized now. But what that means is, we've got a little window here where rates are a little bit low. We've been in a rising interest rate environment for 18, 20 months, and we're, we're in a position where it's backed up a little bit for us. We also have added to that, there has not been a lot of what we call Missouri paper. What we mean by that is not many people have been out in the market that carry Missouri names, in other words, that have that tax, that state tax exemption on the income tax that comes with tax exempt bonds. When we don't have that, we have a lot of people interested in buying money from, that comes from Missouri, buying bonds that come from Missouri. And we saw that St. Louis Public Schools had an issue from, they passed it in September. But anyway, they had a $120 million deal that was down a couple weeks ago, that we did a couple weeks ago, and we had, I think, over half a billion dollars worth of orders. So what that means is when we get four times oversubscribed, and we get four times more orders than we have bonds, is we just start lowering interest rates until people fall off. So it means lower interest rates. So we can even sometimes get a little bit below the market when it comes to those things. One of the reasons we want to be ahead is we've got a little bit lower interest rate environment. We've got Missouri people that are hundreds of Missouri paper. Those are two positives. The other positive you have going for him, step away from the podium for a second, is this little dip here. So we don't often see that. That's called an inversion in our yield curve. Typically, if you're borrowing out one year, you can't borrow at high, or, sorry, if you're borrowing out seven years, you won't borrow at rates lower than you borrow one year. It's kind of counterintuitive, right? If you went out to the one-year loan, it would be significantly more expensive than a seven-year loan. The good news for you is, we, we actually are going to use some cash to pay, you have some cash sitting there, and we're going to deploy that very quickly into that service fund essentially to pay that lease off. And that's one of the ways that we'll save you $5.5 million. But what that means mainly for most of your construction phase is you've got a real potential to earn more money in terms of the rate that you're earning on your money deposits and on working and you're paying out of your debt. Now that, you have to meet some categories to do that, because the federal government says if you're going to utilize your tax exempt status to issue bonds, so issue a lower rate and you'll pay tax on that, and they want this return, but if they're not paying tax on it, they'll accept this return, right? We've got, they want to set some limitations on you on being able to be a bank essentially in arbitrage. But we do have the opportunity to do that, and we have not had that opportunity at least since late 2000. So at least 15 years since we really had a chance to get into the market and get you locked in at interest rates that are below what you're earning in construction phase. That's a really good thing, and we want to be able to take advantage of that for you. And that is my time. Second indication.
Sorry about that.
What that means, though, is we've got to wait 30 days before we can actually issue your general obligation debt. The reason why is because we have, we have a 30-day period over which patrons can protest the results of an election. Has, has an election ever been overturned? No. Will your election be overturned? No. But the last thing you want to do is issue bonds and have it get caught up in litigation and not be able to close your loans. A death knell for being able to borrow money in an efficient way out in the capital markets is to not close a bond issue. That's if it's one or two million dollars. If you don't close a $120 million bond issue, that's really bad. So we want to make sure we avoid that. You'll remember your, your legal counsel, who does all of your... Gilmore and Bell, your legal counsel, who does all of your work on the documentation, would not even allow us to press it within 30 days. Your May 2nd work session is inside of that 30 days. So if we come to approve that, we will have a slightly different resolution for you than what you're used to. What it does is authorize the board president to sign what's called a bond purchase agreement without having to have a special board meeting. Typically, the way this works is, we price your bonds, and we're actually out in the market the morning of your board meeting, and then that evening, we bring you a real live deal for you to approve. This is a different deal. This will set us in a box of parameters that we will not be allowed to go outside of. The biggest one for you all is going to be fee, right? You're going to see an interest rate in those parameters that is significantly higher than what we think they're going to be. The reason behind that is not because we're going to go out and get you above market rates. That is absolutely not the case. If you look back on that stuff, we're number one in the country. We double people up on the number of issues we do, particularly in the casual level. We don't get to that number because we're not good at it here. The reason we have that wide gap for us, that wide berth to be able to do that, is the last thing we want is to have the adopted parameters resolution on May 2nd, with the plan that we're going to be one of the first, if not the first issuers out of the gate with these April elections being passed, and then have to come back to your May board meeting and say, we messed that up, rates have gone up a little bit, we couldn't execute that, we're going to have to come back to you and ask again. That's what we're trying to avoid here. Having said that, we'll be in constant communication with your admin team, and we'll put together a bad deal. There are circumstances that I can foresee where we pull the deal out of the market. But the plan right now is to have that, those bonds priced on May 11th, and have that money in the bank, earning interest for you all in May 25th. So, almost as quickly as we can do it. It takes us six to eight weeks to do the process of issuing bonds at a good pace. In this case, we did some back work on it, so we're in good shape to be able to do that. So that's essentially where we're at. We've got cash flow documentation. A lot of this stuff here is just going to be for your reference, source material for how we come up with this information. But I do want to quickly go over, this is where we're going to be at, we think, on your bond yield. This is a loose scale, this is kind of phase two of how we structure our bonds. We're close enough to pricing that we feel like we should get close to where you're going to be at, but it's not super tight, it's not as low as it would be just to a percent of a million. Yield's anywhere from 2.56 all the way out to, oh, mid to low fours. But the number you care about is there on the modern rates, 3.8%. We think you'll be in the high threes, low fours, far from $120 million. So again, from a historical perspective, that's tremendous, especially considering that most of this, or a lot of this debt is out long. This is a relatively new structure than we knew. It's, I call it, loosely call it a barbell structure. You have some cash on hand, you have some capital ability to put capital to work right away in that service fund. We want to do that right away, so we've got $30 million of the payments coming up, contemplating it in this first year, and then you've got some good cash flows. But we want to make sure we're leaving room for you to do future no-tax increase bond issues. So when those numbers drop down, the idea is, that does one of two things. Either it creates a natural drop, dip in your payments to allow you to do no-tax increase bond issue, or if you've exceeded our growth targets, what it likely means is that if interest rates have gone up significantly from where they are now, because again, we're still in a very good interest rate environment historically, and we are higher than we were two years ago, but we're still in a good spot, we can shorten the duration of the next bond issue, right? We want to, while we see these low interest rates, we want to borrow as much of that as we can for as long as we can. But we also want to be cognizant of the fact that you've got cash coming in the door, and we don't want to just be accruing, right? So that's kind of where we get to, that barbell, where you see big payments upfront and big payments out long. That could change the next time you do a bond issue, depending on work conditions. But right now, we feel like guaranteeing you a shorter duration of future bond issues, borrowing shorter, paying less interest is a good thing when we're in this trajectory right. If you don't do another bond issue, you'll pay that thing off a lot quicker anyway, it won't matter. So, you've got service schedule, let's just let me get to this. So this is the savings we contemplate on those two leases. And the columns on the, three columns on the right are what we care about. The net new D slash S, two columns to the right, that's what you will pay when we do this refinancing. The column on, in the middle there, the old net D slash S, that's what you would have paid had you done nothing. I know your lease is slightly above market rates right now, so there will be some savings in there if you did just the lease refinancing. The column on the far right there nets all of those numbers out to $5.5 million in savings. So not only are we freeing up that operating capital, as we already talked about, but we're also actually saving $5.5 million by doing that, which is a double plus in our book. So, there's a few documents for you to review. That parameters resolution, that bond resolution is one to look at, and see those parameters. Those parameters are not in there yet. We will provide those to you about a week prior to your board meeting, in that year work session in May, so a fair amount of a week and a half, we'll give you those. And we want to get as much time as we can before we put those in front of you. The other one, as Dr. Tucker mentioned, is what's called a conditional call notice. So that lease is currently accruing interest on a daily basis, and we will be required to pay the accrued interest over time. Bondholders require a 30-day notice before they, you are allowed to actually, group plans, will buy back that debt by paying principal only, principal and then the interest that's accrued since your last payment date, which is April 1st. So we want to make sure we're shortening that time of your accruing interest, so that we can save as much money as we can. This will allow us to make the closing and the payoff coincide. If we were to wait until your May 2nd board meeting, then we would be 30 days off from that. Well, it really wouldn't, nothing could occur until May 3rd, and then so we couldn't close that until June 3rd. It's only seven or eight days, but it's still, it's money that we don't need spent if we can get something like a conditional call notice put in place. All that does is then we tell UMB, as you're saying, we tell UMB to inform bondholders within the 30-day time period that those bonds may be called in if the district chooses to do a bond issue, doesn't require you to call those in. So if you don't do an issue till August, June, or next June, depending on what you want to do timing-wise, that's not going to be a big deal. I know I've covered hours worth of material in 30 minutes, so.
Nice job.
I know I've covered hours worth of material in 30 minutes, so.
Nice job.
No.
Discussion or questions for Joe as we have them? I know he mentioned a lot of the hands that touch the work over at Steeple, but then I know you mentioned Gilmore and Bell, you also mentioned UMB Bank. Fisher Broyles is an additional legal counsel that we work with. We've got a call with Standard and Forests coming up here, I believe, tomorrow afternoon. So there are a lot of moving pieces to this, and a lot of partnerships that we lean on. So thanks, Joe, for walking us through that. Questions for Mr. Kinder while we have them?
Oh, just since you brought up Standard and Forests, I know, Joe, you're not, wouldn't hold you to this, but you think the rating that we're going to get is going to be good?
Oh, I do. I mean, I got accused of, I've been accused of being too sunshiny sometimes, but I really do feel like you all carry AA rating, and that's just a credit rating, just like when you got me a credit score of my house, borrow money for a car. And AA is equivalent to like an 850. AAA is the highest. You can get to a AA plus, but the last feedback we got from Standard and Forests is, you simply, community-wise, don't have any care. We in the Midwest struggle a little bit to get higher ratings, because some of these things are based on nationwide averages, and about 75% of that score is based on the local community wealth. Only about 25 or 30% of it is based on the board and operations, and how you know with your administration, and take those processes, procedures, and operate the district on a daily basis, and what kind of fiscal culture. You are in tremendous fiscal health, obviously. Passing this no-tax levy increase or transfer is going to significantly help your operational health, and some of the things that we want to do in terms of attracting or changing top talent. Those are all things that S and P is going to key on and mind. It's not just additional dollars coming in the door, but it's what you did with those dollars, right? Being able to be competitive, not only competitive, but leading salary, being able to attract your teams on talent all across the board, with a certified, certified, whatever, is important to them, because they know how hard the job is to turn down. So those things, you're going to have to step ahead of everybody else. So I expect to get a firm AA rating and some positive outlook on that. Expect to be surprises and feel to get some convincing results.
So we're just going to be, in May, at the study session, authorizing parameters. I just wanted to make sure that was kind of the gist of what it is that we'll be giving you, so.
That's right. And then, at that meeting, typically, we'd like to do that within a couple of minutes of your board meeting. We will wait to get past that 30-day window, and like I said, we target in May 11th, there's not a lot going on that day. We do want, our job is to get as many eyes on your bonds as we can, investors and sales staff combined. So we will then, at your board meeting, your regular board session in May, we will have some reporting, so it's 40. But all we'll have is estimates of that one on how things will go.
And you thought, did you say that you thought you'd have the estimates too, as like 10 days before?
Yeah, we'll make sure it goes into your, if you send out a packet a week before your study session, we will make sure those are included in there. I know it's just a few days, but we do want to watch the market every day, and discuss for sales and situations after, and then maybe determine issue of that one.
As soon as we have that, we'll share that with the board, certainly. So again, this evening, two items. The first one being the Series 2023 General Obligation Bond Mark Resolution. We'll see that again at the study session. Second item then has 8.4 as far as the outstanding lease participation certificates and redemption. Now, there is some motion language that's uploaded to Diligent this evening for your consideration.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
The board about the resolution directing the reduction of certain outstanding lease participation certificates of the district.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kinder.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time. Now, we have contracts, purchases, bids.
Yes. Last item is 8.5 under new business, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Anderson to walk us through these pieces.
There are three items. First two, I'll get fairly quickly. These are both expedited contracts, accruing through time constraints, and we'll be sending these pretty quickly, and signed in, and bringing to you now tonight for authorization. One is with our collaborative, and it's with respect to some PD at the Wilks, I believe. And then, the second is for our, for the more prominent, making sure that we get that contract in place before the bid. And so, I just want those two items to be included tonight. The third item I was going to speak to, this was actually on the consent agenda, and we decided for a couple reasons to pull it off. And if you're fair with me, I've had to prepare my remarks, which is kind of not my normal way of doing this, but I wanted to be thorough and as concise as possible. So I'm going to walk you through kind of the process that we've been through, going through perspectives of projects. So this is pertaining to review of elementary boiler and chiller replacement project. This was identified as a high need, as part of our project and site review, and it was included in our capital plan. We have been working closely with our engineers for some time to develop plans and specifications for the work that totals about 400-plus pages, which are very involved and prescriptive. According to policy procedure for such work, we pointed the invitation out for bid, and we submitted those a couple months ago. We advertised those in the paper, we put on our website. We'd also reach out to all contractors that have done this work. On March 15th, those bids were open, as were advertised, we received seven bids. The apparent low quality bidder, we can be responsible, was Anderson Mechanical, and their amount was $745,457. So with that, that will be, as we often do, or always do, we engage the contractor for some post-bid conferencing conversations, including the engineers, including our team and their team. Our team requested that as part of this break, that we do a cost breakdown of the chiller and boiler project, and we asked that this part of the form that is included within the bid package. The reason we did that was simply to get a sense of the magnitude of the project. It wasn't tied to any desire to potentially split the work out, it was our team decided to request for that, simply to get a sense of the magnitude of the project, and it really wasn't relevant to our evaluation, since again, it was always to do on project. Anderson did not include that breakdown. All other six bidders did include the breakdown. So Anderson submitted one lump sum, all the others included two costs that could be quickly brought into one lump sum of the project. Anderson did include all of the pertinent information within their submittal, total costs, and then all of their standards, as part of the submittal that they made for the district. But, the form that the vast submit was not completed, and that's important to be noted. As is our practice, we held the conversations with Anderson to ensure that everything else was complete within the bid, that they fully satisfied the specs and understood the magnitude of the project and their quality for the work, and conducted some reference checks, and they check other boxes in those conversations with Anderson and some of the references. With that, our team determined that Anderson is a devious bidder, and they are qualified to perform the work and comply with our policies and procedures and statute, and also is consistent with our practices in dealing with projects like this over time, as we have previously. The second low was bidder was SGI, which is a local living firm. Anderson Mechanical is at Kansas City, Texas. SGI has reached out to us, asked some questions about the corporateness of the decision that our team, staff is making to recommend to the board that they go with Anderson Mechanical. They explicitly expressed concerns with Anderson's failure to complete the form as was prescribed, which is true, they did not complete that as prescribed. As we shared earlier, and then as we shared with SGI, we did not complete the same complete form of material to our recommendation, especially since all relevant information was submitted for the original sealed proposal. And that was really important to us in kind of here today. So, our recommendation as staff is that we go with Anderson Mechanical, and that is based on the story that you shared, but also based on our past practice. The only thing I did want to note is that we have worked with SGI in the past, and we have probably been very capable and reputable firm, have had good experience with them. And if their bidding is less than Anderson, we would, without any doubt, recommend a team here tonight. I just wanted to make sure that that was loaded and displayed in this presentation. With that, I would have to take any questions from you.
So, did anything change between when the sealed bid was opened and after you had a post-bid discussion?
Nothing changed. We know the pricing was the same as the original. The only thing that changed is, and I think initially that we had with them, we asked, they had the breakdown. This is before we knew this was any issue, and they actually had those on hand, they provided those to us. So they did have the breakdown for the chiller and boiler, they just not, they did not see that as part of the proposal. But nothing has changed in terms of the pricing or the expectations as the bid took.
And I think, to be clear, at the outset, with the proposal that was provided, we were still able to do an apples-to-apples comparison and look at that, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, Mr. Anderson, have we had other instances where we put projects out to bid that a bidder has not completed the form?
I asked my team that, and their recollection was yes, that sometimes these submittals are, they're not always fully consistent. And in this case, with this specific issue, in talking with our team and talking with your counsel, it isn't material to the matter, and the splitting of the cost did not affect the decision-making. So we didn't feel like that was significant to our decision. But I do know, because we do about 100 meetings a year, you know, we're close to 1,000 since I started working for the district, it's very common to have some disparities in what is submitted, or maybe how it's submitted. The thing we're most focused on is to make sure we have all the necessary information that is submitted. Some firms do it in a letter that spells everything out. We have several firms do that, so we have that letter. And then, we also like to have that form filled out as well. So, there is often inconsistencies with how things are submitted. And I'm sure that those forms have not always been fully filled out, as is the case here. But I don't have specific information on it.
Thank you.
So we had like a handful of pages in the bid that they, everybody was required to fill out, right? I'm showing roughly 22 pages to complete and submit. Do bidders generally submit more information than that, or is it just, let me just fill out the 22, send it in, and be done with it, or?
It varies completely. This is handling that seven bids. In this example, that's seven bids. One supplemental was basically the form.
Yep.
It was two pages. One supplemental was 35 pages long.
Okay.
And they're all telling, and everybody else in between, they're all telling us the same thing.
Yeah.
This is what we will do this work for, per the specs included in the proposal.
Yep. And then after the team goes through and says, all right, this is what we believe to be the lowest qualified bid, they're going to sit down, go through the process, validate the bid, make sure everybody understands, okay, this is what we're committing to, this is, you know, any questions, further, you know, details, et cetera? Great. Anderson, in this instance, said, yeah, no, we're still in for the amount that we submitted originally.
That was never called a question.
Okay.
You mentioned the location of both of the terms in question. You talk about if there's any legal significance to that in terms of evaluating the bid. I mean, you deal with the purchasing aspect of it.
I don't want this specific reference. There's something in statute that allows extra wear protection if you wanted to go beyond the whole bid, would be if they were a Missouri-based corporation. There's nothing in there that's mobile delivery, so that is a potential consideration. Both SGI and Anderson are in this regard.
Steve, this is also an emergency, right?
This is not an emergency.
It's not an emergency. Okay.
And according to our board policy DJF-1 for purchasing, the district will award to the most lowest and best bid, but reserves the right to waiver minor technical defects in a bid. And so, your team's judgment is this is a minor technical defect, and therefore, the policy covers that. That's how you're looking at it?
That's right.
Yeah. You know, and I respect that. I think the thing, we're on the verge of a whole bunch of more projects, and I think as a minimum, trying to identify what can we learn from this to try to make sure we, because we want to minimize the instances of using minor technical defects, and whether that's reiterating the need to fill out the form, or whether that's, if we don't need to see things broken out, maybe we don't ask for them that way unless we have a reason to. I guess those would, I guess, kind of takeaways of things we can learn from this, but I think, you know, where we're at, this policy covers your recommended action.
And if I could just add, that, your points are, is part of the conversation that we've been having on both fronts, that we have to be attentive to what we ask and how, and what we expect. Make that clear.
According to the, flexibility is a value here also. Inflexibility can be needed.
In terms of?
Of being able to waive something or determine if it needs to be placed. Does that flexibility allow for something to move forward?
Well, I think the only thing in this case probably is, with respect to timing, I think in moving this forward, because there's free time in ordering equipment. So, the flexibility to allow us to accomplish this work and move it forward. But I don't, from a staff standpoint, we don't feel like we're compromising anything in terms of principles or such with the recommendation. But I think it puts us an opportunity to kind of move this project forward.
And I wasn't saying that. I'm saying I think it needs flexibility.
I move the board approve the emergency contracts, purchases as listed, and approve the contract with Anderson Mechanical.
Second.
Denise, when you're ready.
AJ?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Upcoming dates. Oh, legislation and advocacy. Did I skip something?
You didn't.
Okay, good. So, is there any new news on legislation, aside from the fact we're coming to the end of the?
I need to die. I need to die.
Do not forget, though, if you're reading things and you're concerned about things, you can always contact your legislator and give your opinion.
I think it was last week. Was it last Friday, Cooperative School Districts held a virtual legislative update, of which their lobbyist, Steve Carroll, provided an overview of where things are at. So, appreciate those that were able to jump on that. Again, as we mentioned earlier, along with other associations that send out legislative updates. So, we're near the end.
Then there's the list of upcoming dates. Study session is next on the agenda for May the 2nd. And?
Do we need to bring back the board to treat the question?
I was going to add that. In terms of, I believe Denise reached out to board members to confirm your availability on June 8th instead of June 6th. June 6th coincides with the State Board of Education meeting. So, I believe we had checked with everyone in terms of their ability for that Thursday, so we'll look to move that, we'll fix that in terms of changing that from June 6th to June 8th. Time and location to be announced, we'll get that information out to you as well. We're planning for that. And we'll, of course, be working with officers in and around the agenda for that meeting as well.
And then, Summer Summit is in Branson. It, however, is over Father's Day weekend, or right there in front of Father's Day weekend, just for your planning. And then, are there any board remarks?
I think first, I want to congratulate Angie, AJ, and Jen. Welcome to the board, Jen. But I would also like to recognize Nick for his two years of service as board president and all the time and commitment that that took, so just wanted, we'd be remiss if we didn't mention it. So, thank you very much, Nick.
Anything else? It's 9:27. Need one more motion.
I move the board adjourn.
Second. Thank you. AJ?
Yes.